Call to order the regular city council meeting of Monday, October 5th, 2015. If you would all rise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kathy, would you call a roll, please?
Sure. Mayor Greer has been excused this evening, and we have Mayor Pro Tem Wade.
Here.
Council members Brown.
Here.
Ekstrom.
Here.
Ketchmar.
Here.
Bates.
Here.
Sharaki.
Here.
And Frida.
Here.
We have a quorum.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the September 21st regular city council meeting, the September 25th special city council meeting, and the September 23rd public works committee meeting. Are there any corrections? Hearing none, could I have a motion? Councilman Bates?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Hold on, in a second.
Not yet.
Councilman Ketchmar, thank you. Go ahead, Ron.
Make a motion we approve.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, you kinda...
Jumped ahead there.
You did.
That's what happens when you get a rookie up here.
I know. That's what you get for wearing the tie. Make a motion we approve the September 21st, 2015 regular city council meeting, the September 25th, 2015 special city council meeting, and the September 23rd, 2015 public works committee meeting.
I second that.
Thank you.
There we got it.
Any comments? Could you call the roll, Kathy?
Councilmember Bates.
Aye.
Councilmember Ketchmar.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Frida.
Aye.
Councilmember Sharaki.
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Wade.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
The next item, are there any council members announcements? Councilman Bates?
Yeah, we have a general government meeting Wednesday, October 7th at 4:00 PM.
Anything else? Okay, item four is the adoption of the agenda and the consent agenda. Doug, could you review the consent agenda items?
Yes, the first item on the consent agenda is a temporary street closure. We reviewed this matter at the September 23rd Public Works Committee, and this closure would be for Main Street between Third Street and 14th Street, and then the various side streets in that area. This would be on Saturday, December 5th, from 3:00 PM to 9:00 PM, and this is for the Chamber of Commerce annual Christmas parade, so it is getting that time of year. Next item is to authorize the mayor's signature on a letter of support. Again, we reviewed this at the September 23rd Public Works Committee. This letter is a letter of support for a grant application that would be submitted by the Arkansas River Outfitters Association to the Colorado Tourism Office, and that grant, if it's received, would be for the purposes of promoting the recreational use of the Arkansas River, certainly something that our community would benefit from. Resolution number 17, 2015, this is to authorize the mayor's signature to an agreement with the State of Colorado Department of Transportation, CDOT. This agreement would commit the city's contribution of $74,043, which would be 20% of the total project cost, and that total project cost would be $370,215. This project would be for the improvement of the Fourth Street Bridge rehabilitation, or the viaduct as we refer to it, so it would be the repairs of that bridge and the street. It's anticipated that the construction would begin sometime in 2015. We do not know the specific timeframe for that construction. It would depend upon CDOT giving us the notice to proceed, so it's going to be depending upon their schedule, but...
2015 or 2016?
2016, sorry.
Thank you.
And it would be dependent upon their schedule, so, you know, we don't know for sure when that will get started, but sometime next year. Resolution number 18 of 2015 is recommended, again, at the September 23rd Public Works Committee. This resolution would appoint a city administrator, a city attorney, or designees, and the mayor and one or more council members to participate, to represent the city in negotiations with the Canyon City and Royal Gorge Railroad. This is for the possible sale of the Santa Fe Depot. The railroad has requested that the city consider that sale to the railroad. We don't know if this will happen. It would certainly just give the city the opportunity to sit down, think about what we would need from that kind of a sale. Does it make sense even for us to go ahead? And it would give this committee then the opportunity to report back to the city council if it's something that the council felt was appropriate to go ahead with. So it's really a resolution to start the negotiation process. Next item is resolution number 19, 2015. This is a very similar type of a step for the city council. It was recommended, reviewed and recommended at the September 23rd Public Works Committee, and this resolution, if it's approved, would appoint the city administrator, city attorney and the designees, and the mayor and one or more council members to represent the city in negotiations for a possible lease of the city-owned property within the Royal Gorge Park to a possible owner of the Buckskin Joe property. This lease would really relate specifically to the small train that's up there on the Buckskin Joe property. That train goes out, crosses the Royal Gorge Park property to the turnaround and comes back, so they would need to be able to utilize the Royal Gorge Park property to be able to operate that train, and to also consider the possible future development of the Buckskin Joe property as part of that negotiation process. So again, doesn't mean that it would happen, it means that a committee would be set up to look into the possibility, to report back to the city council, get input from the city council, and to see if it makes some sense for that step to go forward. Next item are the bids, bid number 14 of 15. This first one is to remove sand at the water treatment plant settling pond, and this would be to M&amp;B Pond and Lagoon Incorporated of Loveland, Colorado, in an amount not to exceed We reviewed this at the September 23rd Public Works Committee, and again, this is for the removal of the sandbar that typically accumulates over a period of time. That sandbar typically is removed about every seven years. We're at about that point when it needs to be removed. This vendor was the sole bidder from the five that were solicited, and these funds are budgeted in the 2015 budget. Bid number 35 of 15, this is for improvements at the Royal Gorge Park. For the park department, this would be to let construction of Canyon City in the amount of $29,394. This was reviewed at the September 23rd Public Works Committee. This is for various improvements at the picnic shelter, involving a couple of picnic shelters, revamping the picnic shelters, and the restroom facility that's just been built up there. There were two bids that were solicited, or received from those that were solicited, and this vendor was the low bidder. These funds, again, were included in the 2015 budget. This was also part of the insurance settlement related to the fire, so those funds have been provided through insurance. List of bills for the last two-week payable period is the last item on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Doug. Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none, could I get a motion? Councilman Bates?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I make a recommendation we approve the agenda, consent agenda as read.
Second.
Second from Councilwoman Frida. Is there any discussion of the motion? Kathy, would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Bates.
Aye.
Councilmember Frida.
Aye.
Councilmember Sharaki.
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Ketchmar.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Wade.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the administrators' report. Doug?
Couple of items. First item is just a reminder that next meeting for the city-county city meeting would be scheduled on Monday, October 12th, which is next Monday. It would be noon here at the city hall. We would, for any council members that can make it, if you can let Kathy know, we'll have some kind of a lunch for all the people that will attend, and so again, noon on next Monday. Next item that I had included is not so much information for the city council, but really more for the general public that might be interested or watching on TV. The city has been in the process of reviewing its budget for 2016. That budget was submitted to the city council before October 1st, which is a requirement of our city charter, and that budget for anyone that is interested, they can find it on the city's website, which is www.canyoncity.org. They can get it at the library, they can get it at the city clerk's office, they can get a copy at the finance department here at city hall if they would like to get a copy of it for review. Now, just for everyone's information, this is the initial budget proposal that has been submitted to council. The council will be reviewing this budget, talking about it. We plan on October 23rd, which is two weeks from now, to have a budget hearing, and so at that, or on the two weeks from now, which will be the, what's that, the 16th, I guess it is, would be the budget hearing, and by the end of that week, which would be the 23rd, the city council would be identifying any changes that would be made to the budget and submitting those back to the staff for the staff to make final changes to the budget. We hope that we can compile the final changes to the budget by November 6th, so shortly thereafter, and on November 6th then, that final budget would be brought back to the city council for the final revisions to be made, and on November 16th, the city council would then adopt that final budget. We'd have first reading of the appropriations ordinance on December 7th, second reading of the appropriations ordinance, and setting the mill levy. So that's kind of the process for going forward. And so that everybody kind of understands, this budget has been something that actually the city council really kind of started the ball rolling on, going back really as far as February this year, when the city council held a retreat, they kind of talked about the direction for the next several years, what they would like to try to accomplish, the policies that they've tried to set forward. They set forward a series of policies for the 2016 budget, and basically, those were really to try to continue with, you know, effective delivery of services to our community, the services that we're providing, to continue to be consistent and be effective in the way we're providing those services to the community, keeping our fees and charges at current levels. In recent years, the city council's been very concerned about fees and charges that are being paid by citizens for services being provided. Water charges have been held at a flat level until last year. We had to make one adjustment, but again, this year, we're going to keep all those fees and charges at the direction of the council, at their current levels, so there will be no increases in that regard. Council has asked us to keep staffing, continue to try to keep it at current levels as best we can, to look for efficiencies within staffing, and the way we use money wherever we can, to strive to put more money into capital projects, and I'll kind of talk about that in just a second, but over the years, I think going back for several years, the city council has directed staff to try to get more money into capital projects that are things that will improve this community, whether that's roads. We know, we've heard the issues about our roads, but try to get money into our roads as best we can. Try to get money into projects that will improve our community for the future. So we've been trying to do that, and we've increased the amount of money going into projects for next year. Get the most out of our equipment, so as opposed to, you know, buying a piece of equipment to try to get the most that we possibly can out of our equipment, so we're not spending money needlessly, and that we can continue to get that money into other areas where we really need it for community improvements and so on. Remain competitive in the marketplace. We probably have all heard about some of the issues, in our police department in particular, some concerns about pay there. We have completed this salary survey. All those recommendations out of that salary survey have been included into our budget, so we can make sure that our staff is paid according to sort of our competition in the market, and that has been accomplished. Provide, we want to provide according to the council's direction, responsible maintenance of our infrastructure. We want to try to keep maintaining our infrastructure as best as we possibly can. We know that the streets, you know, we've heard this discussion, we have about $400,000 that every year we've been putting into the maintenance of our streets. This year, we're going to be able to put a little bit more than that into our streets, but again, it's still not kind of, it's still not enough really to take care of the streets at the level of maintenance that we need to be doing, so that's part of the ballot question that the city council has set forth to the voters in November. But we're trying to put as much money into that maintenance as we possibly can, whether it's our streets or infrastructure, our parks, our buildings, whatever it may be. To ensure that our city facilities are being operated as efficiently as possible, again, the city council's directed us to eliminate redundancies, to try to make sure that these buildings are operated efficiently, so we're not wasting money on the operations of our facilities. A big one that's important in our community, the council directed us to make sure that we're doing everything that we can to keep our community safe, continue to move forward with what we call community policing policies, which is a policy to sort of bring our police department into alignment with our community, so that we are on the same page, and we're not having many of the problems that you hear in other communities around the country. We want to be able to promote appropriate growth and reinvestment in our community, something that the council has felt is very important, is that we know that in order to get the revenues that we need to be able to invest into our streets in the future, we have to grow the revenue streams that we have available to us, and the way we have to do that is to try to encourage people to reinvest into our community, and to try to, and by doing that, bring businesses here so that people will shop here, spend money here, and as they do that, our sales tax revenue will grow, and as that revenue grows, it can go into our streets and so on. So that has been a directive of the council, and there have been a number of things that the council has kind of directed to put into this budget for 2016 to try to help accomplish that objective. And then to promote sound financial management of all of our financial resources, so that we have a good reserve maintained in all of our funds, so that it's sort of that rainy day budget that we all know in our personal budgets, city has one of those too, so that if something should happen, we have money to be able to take care of whatever that may be. We also have that fund, so that when people look at the health, the financial health of our community, that reflects very well upon our community. We have very little debt in the city budget, and so that is certainly a plus. So those are the things that the city council has directed. We have put a number of information in this packet here, people can read it, you can look at the budget online, but again, we've worked very hard, I think, to try to put more money into our capital outlays. If you go back and take a look at the capital outlays, in 2012, 6%, 6.7% of our budget was going into capital outlays at that time. Over time, based on the direction of the city council, we've been able to push that number up to just over 18%. So when you figure that the amount of money that goes into operating our community for personnel, for insurance, and all those kinds of things that it takes to operate the city, we've been able to sort of grow the amount that's going into community improvements, if you will. So again, I would encourage everyone, if they can, to try to take a look at the budget, the sources that I identified. Hopefully, people will take a little bit of time to try to understand it, understand, you know, what it takes to operate this city. Hopefully, they'll take the time to understand this ballot question that has been proposed by the city council, so that's all I wanted to do, and if city council wants to offer any comments on that, great, and otherwise, that's the end of my report for tonight.
Any comments? Okay. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing for an application for, excuse me, a special event liquor permit for the Canyon City Elks on October 17th. Open the public hearing and ask for a report from the clerk.
Mayor Pro Tem Wade and members of council, this is Tony McCoy representing the local Elks Lodge 610, who's applied to this council for two separate events. We've separated them out, just to make sure that we have the right to public hearing. If there's any people that are opposed to either of them, they have two separate chances to do that. That's why they're on the agenda for two separate items. So this event here is scheduled for Saturday, October 17th. The public hearing, notice of this public hearing was given by posting the premises. The event will be from 4:00 PM until midnight, and will be a dinner and dance and celebration of the Sweetest Day. Right, Tony?
Yes, ma'am.
They have identified that they will carefully check IDs at the door, and those of legal drinking age will be given a wristband to so indicate. The club has had several events in the past with no resulting concerns. Many representatives from this organization have also attended the training that's been provided to them in the past. Upon review of the application, it's been determined that the appropriate fee has been submitted with the application. The diagram of the premises meets the requirements, and the corporation is in good standing with the Secretary of State's office. So with that, I'd ask if you have any questions of Mr. McCoy to go have them now to go ahead and do so.
Councilman Bates?
Hi, Tony.
Hi.
I think you've heard these before, so...
Once or twice.
Yeah. Are you familiar with the Colorado Liquor Code?
Yes, I am.
Is there a copy of the Liquor Code on file with your organization?
Sure.
How many volunteers do you plan on having for this event?
Six to eight.
How will they be trained in the Liquor Code and liquor laws?
They are trained.
Okay. Are you fully aware that you are responsible for compliance with the Colorado Liquor Code, and any violations of this code may be held against you and your organization, as well as future licenseings?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You want to give a little bit of a...
Well, I suppose most of you have seen stuff going around town about the Sweetest Day, but the only problem I have with it, that's my birthday, so they really screwed my birthday up. But anyway, anyway, it's a good thing that's happening for the city, I think, and we hope we see that it might follow on through later on, and see what happens with it, you know, it's something new, and something kind of interesting happening, so let's go out and see what we can do to improve it.
Thank you, Tony. I don't have more questions.
Are there any further comments or questions?
Oh, staff report. I just didn't change the date of the staff report. My fault.
Oh, so it's a holdover from May 4th?
It's a holdover, yeah, it's a copy and paste thing, so, no, I didn't do a staff report in May. It's actually a staff report for today. The last time the Elks did it was in May.
Are there any comments from the audience? Hearing none, close the public hearing and ask for a motion. Councilman Bates?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I make a recommendation we approve the application for a special event liquor permit to the Elks Lodge 610 on October 17th.
Second.
Second from Councilwoman Frida. Any discussion on the motion? Could you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Bates.
Aye.
Councilmember Frida.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Sharaki.
Aye.
Councilmember Ketchmar.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Wade.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
The next item on the agenda is a public hearing for the application for a special event liquor permit for the Canyon City Elks on November 17th. I'll open the public hearing and ask for a report from the city clerk.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem and members of council, once again, not unlike the previous report, this is Tony McCoy representing the Elks for an event that is November 17th. Also, this notice of public hearing was posted alongside the other one on the premises. This event will be from 4:00 until midnight, and will include a dinner and fundraiser for the Orchard of Hope. They have identified that they will also check IDs at the door for this event, and those of legal drinking age will be given a wristband also to indicate. As with the last report, we have had no results concerning this club for any of their similar events in the past, and they have also been coming to the city's training for quite some time, many, many years. So with that, this review of this application, fees have been submitted, they're using this diagram of the same premises, and the corporation is also in good standing with the state, so ditto, I guess, right? Only the change of the date and the organization.
Are there any questions from council? Councilman Ekstrom?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. All right, same questions, you ready? Okay. Are you familiar with the Colorado Liquor Code, and is there a copy on file with your organization? Okay. How many volunteers are you going to have?
Probably assisting them, they're going to have some people, but we'll have another six or eight of our Elks members there to assist them.
And are they trained in the Colorado Liquor Code? Thank you. And finally, are you fully aware that you are responsible for compliance with the Colorado Liquor Code, and any violations of this code may be held against you and/or your organization, as well as for future licensing? Thank you very much. You want to tell us a little bit about this event?
Oh, I really don't know a lot about it, other than the Orchard of Hope's doing a lot of work around, and so we're letting them come into our facilities and help them help the community.
All right. Thank you.
Any other comments from council?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I have one question, Tony. This is the first time I heard that you were going to use Orchard of Hope volunteers for the liquor portion. Is that correct, or is that, are they just going to do mainly the dinner?
Just the part of it with the bands for identification for the people that's going to be there and stuff. Otherwise, we'll be controlling the stuff for the liquor.
And Orchard of Hope, none of their volunteers, none of those volunteers have come to training?
No.
So if we need to do something before that, let's get them in, and let's do a quick nonprofit.
No other comments from council? Any comments from the audience? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and request a motion.
Sure, I'll make a motion that we approve the application for a special event permit for the BPOE Elks Lodge Number 610 on November 17th.
Second. Any discussion on the motion? Call a roll, please.
Councilmember Ketchmar?
Aye.
Oh, sorry, Councilmember Ekstrom, sorry.
Aye.
Councilmember Ketchmar?
Aye.
Councilmember Bates?
Aye.
Councilmember Frida?
Aye.
Councilmember Sharaki?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Wade?
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
The next item on the agenda is public hearing for Public Improvement District 2014-01. I will open the public hearing and ask for a report from Kathy.
This will just be a brief report on my behalf, just to let you know we're in the process of public notification of the property owners. Since the project has been complete, the actual costs have been determined. Notice was given by publishing in the newspaper both on September 11th and the 18th, and with a direct mailing to the property owners on September 14th, advising them of this public hearing and the amounts assessed to their property, and no objections have been received as of today. Just a background on this, when the petitions were done, there was 68% approval, and with the costs that came in, they came in 1.66% less than the estimated amount, so I think kudos go out to the engineering department and the contractor for that. So other than that, we're here to see if there's any public comments from property owners and such from that.
Oh, are there any comments from the audience? Okay, are there any questions from council members? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing and take us to the next item, which is ordinance number 11, C... Councilman Ekstrom, Councilwoman Frida, Councilman Ketchmar. Clerk, would you read by title, please?
This is a bill for ordinance number eleven, series of two thousand and fifteen, an ordinance approving the total cost of improvements in Public Improvement District Two Thousand and Fourteen oh-one in the city of Canyon City, Colorado, approving and confirming the apportionment of said total cost among the several specially benefited lots and parcel in said district, assessing the appropriate share of said total cost against each such lot and parcel, prescribing the manner for which payment and collection of all such assessments, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Could I get a motion? Councilman Ekstrom?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I make a motion to approve ordinance number eleven, series of two thousand and fifteen.
Are there any discussion of the motion? I do have a real brief comment. I would like to commend the city staff in particular for actually making this, or assisting making this project happen. It had originally been a standalone project, and it was cost prohibitive for the residents of that street, and city staff worked to coordinate this with the improvements of the Skyline Drive Hogbacks exit area, and that brought the cost down to where the citizens were able to make this happen, and if you've been on that street, it's a remarkable improvement, so congratulations and commendations to staff on that one. There being no further discussion, would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Ekstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Frida?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Bates?
Aye.
Councilmember Sharaki?
Aye.
Councilmember Ketchmar?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Weed?
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
And the last item on the agenda is the citizens' request to speak. Do we have any requests?
We had received one, and he withdrew before the meeting, so, no, we have received none.
Okay. In that case, we are adjourned.